So good evening everyone once again and thank you for tuning in. And I am very happy that we have a place that we can be rather than be fixed to our television sets. At this time. This is, this is very important and very refreshing for me when I see faces and when I'm engaging with you. So we, I'm going to take a scripture text from Luke chapter 1 verses, verses forty-six through, through fifty-five. Luke chapter 1, verses forty-six through fifty-five. And that basically is the prophecy of Mary when she visited Elizabeth. And Elizabeth showered praises upon her. And she, she responded to Elizabeth's praises by giving glory to God. And magnifying and lifting up God instead and saying that she is not the cause of the wonderful things that are happening to her, but that God is the cause of it. So she praised God instead. So we're going to use that as our, by way of opening up to this session of our Bible study. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. And Mary said, "My soul magnifies the Lord and my spirit rejoices in God, my Savior." For God has regarded the low estate of his handmaiden. For behold, henceforth all generations will call me blessed. For the one who is mighty has done great things for me and holy is his name. And his mercy is on those who fear him from generation to generation. He has shown strength with his arm. He has scattered the proud in the imagination of their hearts. He has put down the mighty from their thrones and exalted those of low degree. He has filled the hungry with good things and the rich he has sent empty away. He has helped his servant Israel in remembrance of his mercy. As he spoke to our fathers, to Abraham and to his posterity forever. So dear God, we thank you for giving us one more time to come together and to reflect on your word and to study your word and your messages in the scriptures. We ask you to remind us of the spirit, your spirit that has been with us, that is in us, that we may cooperate with this spirit, your divine spirit, to unlock the meaning of your word, unlock the messages of your word to us, to each and every one of us who is participating in this Bible study. But also that we can bring what we hear and what we learn and our knowledge and wisdom to share with the rest of the world, our families and our friends. We make this prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. So, especially for those who have not been with us from the beginning, this year's Bible study from now until next year in June, we will be talking about the Gospels. The Gospels, we are talking about the four Gospels. We'll be looking at them at the same time. Because the Gospels do not talk, they don't, they don't approach the story of Jesus the same way. So where, where one gospel doesn't have a story, we will use the story of a different gospel to make sure that we have the complete history. And so we are looking at them at the four Gospels, Matthew, Mark, Luke and John. And the reason why we are looking at that is because the Gospels are, a gospel is about the life of Jesus. And Jesus is the foundation of our faith, of Christian faith. So without Jesus, without the person of Jesus, there is no Christianity. There's no Christian faith. So our faith is built on that. It is from Jesus that we, we can talk about any Christian faith at all. And so we need to know about this person. This, this person need to be, to be on our fingertips. We should be able to tell about, about his story and, and what it means to us. From the beginning to the end, to the time when he ascended into heaven. When he gave charge, he left his legacy to a group of people, his followers, who worked hard and make sure that his knowledge came to you and I today. To flow on, to go on, to be passed on and on and on. And so we need to know this person and be able to express this person also to other people. If somebody, if someone from the Islamic faith wanted to, want to know about your faith, you can, you can have a discussion with that person and explain Jesus Christ to that person. And how that connects to you who are named after, after Jesus. Christian, Christ One. You are named after, so we are Christians. So you should be able to express, just like the Muslim can tell you everything about Muhammad. Can tell you the history of Muhammad, can tell you his birth and some of the stories that, that make it, that make their faith to them. You can enter into a meaningful discussion and exchange of ideas and express yourself and let that person understand who you are and what you follow. So Jesus is the, is the beginning and that is why his story, the story of Jesus is captured by, by the four Gospels. All of them are telling about the same thing. They're telling about the, the, the life of Jesus. What we call the biography of Jesus. The Gospels are the biography of Jesus. And it's very important, it's so important, the reason why it's so important, that's why we, we actually do a lot around when we are reading that story. When we are reading anything about, from the Gospels in the church, we do a whole lot of things around it. First of all, we ask someone who is ordained to proclaim the gospel. So a deacon or a priest goes to proclaim the gospel. When we are going to proclaim anything from the gospel, we lift the book up. We, we kind of dance with the book and process with the book and, and do all kinds of things, fanfare and pump and circumstance around it. Because that is the center, that is the center of our faith. So that's why they carry, we carry the book in the church and the deacon marches in the air and people bow to the book and because that is, it contains the story of our foundation, the heart of our faith. And that's why we incense it. We incense it, incensing something is honor, to honor the thing. Like when we incense a body, the body of a Christian who has passed away, when we incense the body, we are honoring this, this, this vessel that the spirit of God used in the world. So it's an honor. So we incense the book also and we, we bow to it, we proclaim it solemnly and we preach from that perspective. When we are preaching, we preach from the gospel and then use the other readings from the New Testament and the Old Testament to, to make the point. But, but, but the spirit of our preaching has to come from the gospel. The gospel is the biography of Jesus. That's how important the life of Jesus is. And every Christian, every mature Christian, every adult Christian has to be able to tell the story. At least, even in a, you don't need to quote scripture, but at least to have the story in your mind, fresh in your mind. So this is what we are going to talk about from now until, until June. And, and so we opened the books. We opened the, the, and I remember telling you last time, if you have, if you have money, you can, you can take, get this book. This book is called the Synopsis of the Four Gospels. Synopsis of the Four Gospels. It's very good because it juxtaposes all the readings, all the four Gospels at the same time. So each of the story, let's say the birth of Jesus, it will give you from Matthew, Mark, Luke and John at the same time, where they all come in. If a book doesn't have the story, then, then it eliminates that. You see that place blank. So, so all the Gospels did not tell the full story. So you have to really read from other Gospels, be reading from the four Gospels to be able to get a full story. For instance, the gospel of Mark doesn't have the birth, the Jerusalem, the, the shepherds and, and all that. Bethlehem, manger and all. Mark doesn't tell about that. Mark starts his gospel by talking about Jesus grown up already and beginning about to preach, about to preach to the world. So Jesus was always thirty years old that, that Mark starts with. So you have to go to Luke or Matthew to be able to get the Bethlehem story. They tell that story. So you will see the book gives you that. So the book again is synopsis of the four Gospels. Synopsis of the Four Gospels. So that's the book I'm using and, and, but if you don't have it, no problem because I will be giving you the topics as we go forward. And so last Sunday, last Thursday, we began by looking at the beginning of the four Gospels. How they begin, the prologue. And in the prologue, what we find in the prologue of each of the books is that they began to talk about who Jesus is. Who are we talking about here? In a short, in a short, in short sentences. Who is Jesus? So last, last Thursday, that's what we talked about. We talked about how Matthew defined or talks about Jesus. What kind of idea does he have about Jesus? What kind of idea does Mark has about Jesus? And what kind of idea does Luke and John, how do they describe who Jesus is? We wanted the identity of Jesus in a short phrase. It's just like one sentence. Some of them are like just a short sentence. Some of them are about a word that captures, that makes us know who Jesus is. So that's what we talked about last time. I will, I will, as we go forward, I will come back and mention some of those things again. But, but I ask you to, therefore ask yourself, what, what, who you yourself are. And, and, and I ask you to ask yourself, who is Jesus to you? Because you find from the Gospels, they start by talking about who Jesus is, the identity of Jesus. The four Gospels talk about that. Now it's up to us to also define Jesus for ourselves personally. Because we are supposed to know him. We are not supposed to know Jesus, just like everybody else knows Jesus. Everybody else knows Jesus. It's important to know what the church teaches about Jesus. But then you take it home and make Jesus personal to you, to yourself. So you have to answer that question, who is Jesus for me? Having heard about what the church teaches, having heard about what the Gospels say about Jesus, for me, in my concrete situation, who I am? I'm a single parent or I am married and I am married for fifty years, seventy years and twenty years and are not married yet. In my experience, who is Jesus for me? So you should be able to carve something for yourself and define, use your own words to articulate who Jesus is for, for you. This is how important your faith is for you, is built on Jesus Christ. And so you must have a personal relationship with Jesus Christ. So that's how the Gospels start. They start with, with that, the identity of Jesus. And then they go to begin the story of, of the biography of Jesus. So to begin with, this today is the time that we're going to talk about the beginnings, the beginnings. But you can't talk about the beginning of something, especially when it comes to our founder, without talking about what was there before he came. What was there? What was, what was life like when there was no Jesus? When there was no Jesus in, Jesus like Jesus in the person, in the flesh? What was there? What was the life, life like? What was the feeling? What was the feeling of people? What kind of things were going on? And so that's what we're going to talk about. And that kind of feeling is what we, the church has captured in the season of Advent. The season of Advent. Because Advent talks about the coming, but Jesus is not come yet. But the coming of Jesus Christ. Jesus is coming to us, but he has not come yet. So we try to capture the feeling of life just before he came to us. So we need to talk about that. So that's what today, that's what we are, we are talking about. And the Gospels do that too. The Gospels begin, after they are talking about the identity of Jesus, they go on to talk about the moment before Jesus came to the world. And so to talk about that, I will start from, this is the time I will call the time of the promise. Promise. So the word promise should be on our mind. The time before Jesus came, the time Jesus came in a flesh is the time of fulfillment of the promise that was made before he came. So, so when we are talking about the promise, we are talking about the old, what for us Christians, we call the Old Testament. But there's nothing old. It's not like it's old, leave it behind, don't touch it anymore. No. Yeah. Old, old does not mean something that you just, you just forget about. It's important to always know, old in a sense is that the beginning before Jesus, before Jesus came. The time of the promise, the time of the promise. So Old Testament, and so we go on, so we are going to talk about the time of the Old Testament. And then we'll talk about the promise of John the Baptist. John the Baptist was part of that promise. Was part of that promise that John the Baptist will come first to prepare the way. He will be the one who will prepare the way for Jesus to come. So we'll talk about John the Baptist and Zechariah, his father and his mother, Elizabeth, the promise of Jesus. So there was a promise of, of the one who is going to prepare the way for Jesus. But then there's a promise also that Jesus is, is going to come to the world. And we'll see the story about Mary and Elizabeth and their, their relationship. Then we talk about the birth of John the Baptist. That, that concludes, that conclude, the birth of John the Baptist concludes that period of, 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 that period before Jesus Christ came. Once John the Baptist was born, it's how everything is ready for Jesus to come to the world. So, so that's what we're going to do. And then at the end, I'm going to ask you to, to go on and process what we have talked about here by asking yourself, why are you in the world? Why are you in the world? That would be, that would be our question for further reflection on the material of today. So let us talk about the Old Testament. The Old Testament is all about, Old Testament is all about the time, a promise. Everything in the Old Testament, we Christians think about the Old Testament as the promise. And we all need, we need the promise. We need to know what the promise is about. And so the Old Testament can be called many ways. Term Old Testament, you can call it covenant. Or if that word doesn't mediate any meaning to you, if the word testament doesn't, it makes, it makes things high for you or things estranged to you, you can think about relationship. That's, that's the way you should understand. When we talk about testament, we mean relationship. Or times, or the times. Like the time, this is not just a chronological time, but time in a sense of chiro, a chiroptic time, which means what actually took place. The event that took place at that particular time. So the time plus the event is chiro, is, is chiroptic time. It's not chronological time. So, so the times, when you say read the signs of the times, we mean you should, you should interpret the events that are occurring at a particular time. So we are talking about what kind of relationship with God was transpiring before Jesus came. What was the relationship with God? Because God was in the world. But people related with God in different ways. And the ways that they did it was different from the ways that we relate with God through Jesus Christ when Jesus came. So, so that is the Old Testament. When we say the Old Testament, we are talking about the earlier relationship with God. How people related with God. That's what you read in the Old Testament, throughout the whole Testament. And, and so that kind of relationship, God entered into relationship with human beings the first time around through creation. When God created Adam and Eve, God created human beings. So God established relationship with, with human beings. But human beings broke the relationship. So God renewed the relationship and renewed and renewed. So all together in the Old Testament, there are six, there are six renew of relationships. New, God will repair the relationship. Like if somebody breaks the relationship between, if you enter into a relationship and the other person violates the relationship, you guys do not talk for a while. And then you enter into it and repair the relationship and get back together again. That's what was happening throughout the Old Testament. Human beings were the ones who would break the relationship. They would disobey and then, and then they would be punished and God will renew. God will renew, God will renew. And when God renewed it five times. So altogether, you can find six major, major covenants in the Old Testament, in the history of the Old Testament. Six different relationships, covenants or testaments. So the first one was creation. When God created, God established relationship. They were children of God and God was their, their creator. Creatures and creator. And there were terms and you know about the story. But that, that was the Adam, Adam. And so that, that, that relationship was a relationship that God made with all humanity. Adam represents all of us, all humanity, not Israel, but all of us, all human. Anybody who is called human, you are connected to Adam. So, and, and the word Adam, Adama means soil, the earth, dirt. That's what it means. So Adam was not actually a human, some, some person called Adam. It, it means soil. God took soil and molded it and then breathed into it. So, so all of us are soil. And that will be pronounced on us when we die. We'll be called, we'll be told you're from soil and so on to soil, you become, you become part of the soil. But the spirit of God still, still lives, which is the soul still lives. That's what we believe. So that's, that's the first covenant, the first relationship. Human beings broke it, you know the story already. And so God repaired it again. God repaired it in the floods. So in a, in the story of the flood, was a new covenant. A new covenant, a repair that God made. And God made that covenant with Noah. And, and God asked Noah to save some species to begin the new era, the new relationship. That also was a relationship with humanity. It was a covenant with humanity, all humanity. And that ends in Genesis chapter 11. Genesis chapter 11. Then, then human beings broke, broke the covenant again after, after Noah. Human beings still did not get it. We never get it. So they broke it again. And so God now wanted to take a new route. And this time around, God wanted to come to the world. Because it looks like human beings are having a hard time relating with God because God is spirit. And human beings have flesh and bones and all that. They couldn't understand. So God wanted to become flesh and bones too. God wanted to come into human world. But to come to the human world, then, then it must be a human being. That human being will need a nation. And that nation must have a family. And that family must have parents. And they must, that nation has to have ancestry. Everybody, every nation have their old grand, great-grandfathers and their ancestors. That's why we are able to take the ancestry.com, going to find out what our roots are. Everyone will have a root from somewhere. So, so God prepared somebody to be the root of, 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 of that person who is going to be God, human being, who are going to be the means by which God becomes human with us. So that God began to prepare. From Genesis chapter 12, God chose Abraham. That's a new covenant, another covenant now. And that covenant, God promised Abraham that he will be a father of nations. And he promised Abraham descendants that he will give them a promised land. A promised land. That he will give them a promised land and they will become God's people and he, and God will become their God. So Abraham is supposed to, to, to be, to be the ancestor of, of the, of the chosen people. Those people that are called Israel. So Abraham was told to pass on the promise, the blessing from, to his child. And his child should pass, anybody who comes along that line should pass on, on the promise onwards. So that is the, that's the, that's the third one. And then, and then they didn't live up to, live up to expectation. And they finally ended up in Egypt. They ended up being people in Egypt who are being enslaved. So God made another covenant. A new covenant, the fourth one. The fourth covenant was that God made them into a nation. That's when the nation Israel came about. So that covenant is called the Sinai or Sinaiic covenant because it was, it was made on the mount Sinai. The Ten Commandments was a covenant. God gave them laws and made them into a nation. And gave them, Moses was their leader to lead them to be able to obey the laws. So it's called the mosaic, also the mosaic covenant or the Sinaiic covenant. Or another word that is normally used is the Horebic because that mountain is called Sinai, but it is also called Horeb. It's the same mountain that is called two different words. Horeb or Sinai. So sometimes it's called the Horebic or the Sinaiic or the mosaic covenant. This is a new relationship. Now they're going to relate with God by looking at the commandments, the commandments that God gave them. Now this was the, just the beginning, the introduction. The Ten Commandments are the introduction to about 613 laws that God gave them. If you read Leviticus, you will see the number of laws that God gave them. There are many laws. But the Ten Commandments is the beginning, is the, is the, is the preamble or the, uh, prologue of the many laws. Okay? Uh, so that's when they became a nation, Israel. God took them from, from Egypt. The word Exodus me, means journey, journey. Okay? So they're going to journey from Egypt all the way through the desert. And they're going to make their way to the promised land. The promised land that was promised to Abraham, like Mary, talk about that one in the prayer that I prayed, the, the book, the, the scripture that I read at the beginning. Mary prayed, she said, the promise to Abraham, to his children forever. The promise that God made to our ancestor Abraham and to his children forever. Okay? Mary makes mention of that. That promised land is Israel. Is where they marched from Egypt, got the laws at Mount Sinai. And moved on all the way through the desert and all the way and entered into Israel, the land Israel, the promised land. So when they lived on the promised land and then they, they broke their covenant again. I mean, they, 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 they couldn't just help themselves, uh, just like we can help ourselves too. We do wrong. Uh, so they violated their, their relationship. Uh, and so God gave them kings, because they had no king. Uh, so God gave them kings. So this is the beginning of kingship in Israel. Israel did not have kings until David. Okay? Uh, well, until Saul, it started with Saul. But David was the king after God's own heart. Okay? Saul was not. Uh, and so, uh, uh, God chose David and, and told David, you are going to be the line by which, by which that God, human will come, God will come to the world. Because God is preparing to come to the world to make a covenant, a relationship that can never be broken anymore. Okay? So God is preparing through all these things. So God chose David and the Messiah, uh, or the promised one has to come from the royal family. Has to be the king of Israel, king of Israel, okay? King of the Jews. And that's why when Jesus was crucified, you remember the writing that they put on top of his head was, Jesus, the Nazare, uh, Nazarean king of the Jews. Okay? King of the Jews. So, so now look at how things are narrowing. If you look at Exodus, they were the nation Israel. But first of all, you start from the, the beginning, you see humanity, humanity. Then you talk about the promised Israel. Then it moves on to the nation Israel. The nation, the whole Israel. Then it came down again to Judah, okay? Jewish. Okay? That's smaller, it kept, it kept being smaller because you need humanity first. And then out of humanity, you have a, a, a promised nation. And out of the nation, you have a, an ethnic group or a tribe or a small, a small town. Uh, a small ethnic, ethnic group. Okay? So that's Judah. That's the narrowed, uh, 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 group of people from whom the Messiah will come. From whom the God, God, human will come. Okay? So, so then, uh, after David, after David was made king, he himself broke the covenant. Uh, he, he, he did wrong against God. And the people and the kings after king, king after king, they did bad things, they did wrong. Wrong until God allowed them to be carried into exile, to be exiled, okay? They were carried into Babylon and then they were returned. God repaired. After they have paid their debt by working in foreign land for a long time. Then God asked that they return. So they were returned, they returned back to Israel. And that's when they built the, the second temple. Because the temple was destroyed when they were taken away to Babylon. The first, the temple that David's son, Solomon built, that temple was destroyed. But when they came back, when God restored them, they built, they, they rebuilt the temple. And so from now on, it is, it was called the, the Second Temple period, uh, from Second Temple period. So Judaism is the one. Judaism now is that form of relationship to God, is the new covenant. Is a relationship to God through Jewish rituals, to Jewish understanding of God. Okay? The, the, uh, and that's what remain. So, so it is from that Judaism that Jesus was born. The fact is that from now on, from the Second Temple period in Juda, Judaism, that covenant, the sixth covenant. Every pregnant woman in the Jewish community was hoping that their child was going to be the Messiah. Every one of them. If somebody gets pregnant, they're like, oh, it might be because you are in that line, in the, in that line of, 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 of David. Uh, of, of Judah. Okay? So that's, that's something you have to keep in mind. So that is the six, six times God made covenant, covenant after covenant after covenant. And, and, and so, so that was that period. All that thing that was happening in that period that I've just described, all that was happening there. Uh, is what we try to capture in Advent. We try to capture that, all that experience. And that experience produced, the summary of it produced these three things that I'm going to tell you now. These three, three things that are the summary. They are the summary of that whole experience in the Old Testament, okay? And it was captured by these three prophets in the Old Testament, the three prophets in the Old Testaments. The first one is Isaiah. So all that experience in the Old Testament made the Israelites or the Jewish people have an idea that to expect, to expect somebody, a Messiah. Somebody to come and save. Uh, some, the Messiah was the Anointed One. Mess, mess, messiah means anointed. The Anointed One, uh, which Latin, Latin says Christos. The La, Christ comes from the Latin. But the Hebrew word is Messiah, Messiah. That's the Messiah. And the meaning is the Anointed One, the Anointed One, or the Anointed. The one who has been anointed to be the savior of the world. Okay? So they began to sense that, they began to have a feeling that there is somebody coming. They're wait, they're, so they're waiting, expecting somebody. That's the feeling of the period before Jesus Christ came. And you'll see, if you have a pen and paper there, I would like to give you the quote, the scripture text that talks about that, that feeling. Messianism or Messiah. So, uh, you, on Isaiah, messianism, you can find it in Isaiah, the book of Isaiah, chapter 11, verses one to nine. Isaiah 11, one to nine, okay? Then the second, uh, feeling was, was a feeling of a new, a, a, a re, reinvigoration or renewal and refiring and, and inspiration, uh, re-inspiration. Uh, a new spirit is going to be put in us. They were expecting to revive because they feel like dead people. Uh, uh, that was the feeling before Jesus came. Things felt like dead. Things were not lively, no life. And so, so the coming of the Messiah is going to inject a new spirit. Remember that the first, first covenant, the old covenant was also, it began that way. It was, the spirit of God was put in the soil and the soil became a human soul. Okay? God molded a clay and breathed into him and he became a human soul. So also this second time, and God renewed that several times. But this time around, there's going to be a new re, a new inspiration, which is a re-inspiration. And you'll read it in Ezekiel, uh, the book of Ezekiel, uh, the prophet Ezekiel, chapter 37. Ezekiel 37, verses one through seven, okay? Ezekiel 37, verses one through seven. So you take your time and read these and, and you can capture all those feelings. The third one is what I gave you last, uh, at the end of last, uh, Thursday's, uh, Bible study. Uh, that was Jeremiah, Jeremiah, chapter, uh, 31, verses 31 through 34. Isaiah, Jeremiah 31, 31 through 34. Okay? And there it talks about, I am going to make a new covenant. This is the prophecy of, of Jeremiah. I'm going to make a new covenant. And that covenant is going to be written on people's hearts, people who have it in themselves. And, and it says, no one have to teach you to obey the laws because it will be in you. It's going to be in your heart, a new relationship, a new covenant. Jeremiah spoke about that. So, so these are some of the things that were, uh, captured the feeling and, and you can think about them in two words. Two words. A general feeling before Jesus came included expectation, the spirit, the, the feeling of expectation. And the feeling of preparation, okay? Preparation. So, so it's like you, you're expecting somebody and then you're making, you're, you're feeling like you have to make preparations for that person, uh, to enjoy when the person comes, uh, uh, to you. So that is, that characterized the, 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 the life of the Judeans, of the people before Jesus Christ, uh, uh, came. And that's very important. So, so then you begin to talk about the events, the practical events that, that occur before Jesus Christ came. The first one is, uh, uh, again, a preparation. Uh, God, even God prepared, uh, uh, before coming into the world, God made preparations. Uh, uh, and so the first preparation that God made was to prepare the one who is going to prepare the way for Jesus. To prepare the one who is going to prepare the way for Jesus. So he prepared by, by, uh, uh, promising that, that there was somebody, he chose a parent. And use that parent to bring forth this guy, John the Baptist. So John the Baptist is that preparation. And you know the story, uh, the story is found in, 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 in the Gospel of Luke. Okay? Gospel of Luke, chapter one, verses five through 25. Luke, chapter one, verses five through 25. And there, Zechariah was, was a priest. The Zechariah was the father of, of John the Baptist. He was a priest and he was burning incense in the temple. And then, and then an angel appeared to him, just like an angel appeared to Mary. An angel appeared to him and told him, you are going to be the father, your, your wife is going to have a child. And these folks are over 90 years old. Okay? Uh, and they are going to, they're, the angel was telling them that. So it's something impossible, like, like in the case of Mary, uh, who was, who, who was not in any relationship. So, uh, so Zechariah also questioned, questioned the angel and said, uh, no, I don't believe this. I don't believe this can happen. So, so the angel told him, you are going to be mute. You cannot speak until your child is born. That's when you will speak. Okay? So Zechariah, uh, uh, Zechariah's wife is Elizabeth. So, so then, um, they had, uh, uh, John the Baptist was promised. So that was just the promise, that was not the birth of John the Baptist. God announced and promised the birth of John the Baptist. Then the second story is the promise or the annunciation of Jesus himself. Okay? So, so there is an announcement of John the Baptist, then there is an announcement of, of Jesus. And there's six months in between the two, six months. So John, Jesus is older than John the Bapt, uh, John the Baptist is older than Jesus, six months. Okay? And so the announcement of Jesus himself or the promise of J, that Jesus was coming was made to Mary. Mary, uh, who was then they're getting ready to get married to, to, to Joseph. And J, and, and the angel Gabriel appeared to Mary and told her about the plan. The plan was that God is coming to the world and God needs a body. Because God is spirit. So God needs a body to, 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 to use or to be, to work with. To reach other human beings. So, uh, Mary was asked, so you want to join the company? I need you, I need you to be the mother of that human being. You want to join the company or what? And Mary says, oh yeah, well, yeah, I'll join. So Mary signed on to the company, signed on to the plan. Okay? And, 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 and therefore, uh, and when she signed on, she was also told in the promise that her cousin, who is Elizabeth, also is pregnant. And Elizabeth is pregnant with the one who is going to prepare the way for Mary's child to work in this world. Okay? So when Mary finished, got the information, she went to Elizabeth. And when she went to Elizabeth, God's spirit worked between the two women. Okay? The two women were carrying, one was carrying in her womb, the, the, the preparer of the way. And the other is the Messiah who is going to work. So, so the babies themselves were talking. Uh, the baby in Elizabeth's womb leapt for joy when it saw Jesus in the womb of Mary. So, so the Bible says that Elizabeth showered praises upon Mary. And says, ah, you are the blessed one. You are the blood, you are carrying the Messiah, the, our God, you are carrying God over there. So I don't, I, I should come to you, you didn't have to come to me, I should come to you. And then Mary says, oh no, don't praise me. So the prayer that I read from the beginning is about that. Mary was telling Elizabeth, don't praise me because I didn't do, do anything of this. The Almighty has done great things for me and holy and the glory and the praise should be given to the Almighty. Okay? So that was what has become that prayer, the magnificat, that we pray a lot, uh, in a church. So that, that was the, the, the thing between the two, the, the story, that story about the announcement of the coming of, of God to the world. And then you move on to the real, the birth of John the Baptist himself, okay? The birth of John the Baptist. When John the Baptist was born, uh, they were going to name him after one of their relatives. But Elizabeth said, no, his name is going to be John. Now, nobody knew how she got that name. Because the name John was given to Zechariah, her husband. But her husband was made mute, he could not speak. He could not, he could not, he could not do anything. Maybe he motioned, maybe he wrote it. Maybe he motioned, maybe he wrote it. But that was interesting, that Elizabeth knew the name of the child when the angel did not break that news to her. And the news was broken to Zechariah, but Zechariah got home mute, could not speak. So how did she know the name, that the name was going to be that? But anyway, that's a question, that's something you can discuss in Bible study. So she says, "His name is going to be John. His name is not going to be anybody else but John." And so they were telling her, the family members were telling her, "Nobody is called that name in your family. So why, why do you want that name?" So they motioned to Zechariah. So they brought him a stone tablet, and he wrote on it, "His name is John." And that's what became John the Baptist's name. And so John the Baptist went on, we were going to read about him. As we read the story, we enter into the story of the Gospels, we'll read about the work that he did to prepare the way for Jesus Christ. So right after that, we are, the birth of John the Baptist is the end of our study or looking into the life that was there before Jesus Christ came. So next Thursday, we are going to talk about the birth of Jesus. We're going to talk about the birth of Jesus from the four Gospels, from how they report these, and then try to capture the meaning of it and how it relates to our own lives. So for this section, the feeling of people and their relationship with God that was there before Jesus Christ came. We want to ask ourselves, you want to ask yourself, "What is your purpose in the world? Why are you in the world?" I want you to ask yourself that question. After you have seen, you see Jesus's purpose, you see John the Baptist's purpose, the reason why John the Baptist is coming to the world. You know, if you read Jesus, Emmanuel, the Annunciation, number two, you will see what Jesus was coming to the world for. Jesus is becoming the God human, so that human beings can learn to live without violating the relationship with God. So that's his purpose. Now what is your purpose in relationship with Jesus Christ? Who is the foundation of your faith? That's a question we should keep in mind. So I'm going to stop here, and let's see if anybody has any question. We can take those questions.
Well, a question might come in, but the only one so far is just asking about the book that you talked about at the very beginning.
Yeah.
Does it come in a Catholic version, or does that matter?
Oh, it doesn't matter. It comes in just one version. This is all the denominations. So the book, the book comes in, all the denominations come together. What's it called, the World Biblical Commission, they work on the Bibles. So this one is used, the same kind is used by the Protestant, our separate brothers and sisters, Catholics, any Christian church studying the Bible, the scriptures, especially the Gospels. This is just the Gospels. It's not all the scriptures, just the Gospels. They all use this one. So you will find it, if you Google it, if you go to amazon.com, and write these words there, you will find it there. The only thing you want is the English edition. Don't buy the Greek edition, because we can read Greek, okay? Unless any of you read Greek and you want to use the Greek one, that's fine. But the English, English edition, and it's synopsis of the four Gospels. Now be sure to find synopsis of the four Gospels, because there is one, the earlier ones, where the three Gospels, Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John, only, Matthew, Mark, and Luke only. There is one like that, Matthew, Mark, and Luke. So that's the synoptic Gospels. But this one is synopsis of the four Gospels. Yeah, okay, right. So.
Father, I have a question.
Yes, question.
This is Karen, Karen on Maui, hi.
Yes, hi, Maui, Maui people.
Yes, so talk about how the Ten Commandments developed into the six hundred and thirteen laws, because I thought that was more the further on in the Pharisees and all that. But how did that become six hundred and thirteen laws?
So in the Ten Commandments was given to them on Mount Sinai. Moses, Moses went up and came down with the Ten Commandments. And the Ten Commandments were there. But after that, they were still on a journey. They were coming from Egypt. And they got to the desert, they went to the mountain, and then Moses got down those. That's when they became a nation, Israel, okay? Before then, there were no nation. They had no laws. They had nothing. They are no priests, there are no leaders, and so on, warriors, and so on. Before then, they were just scattered individual families of Hebrews. So, but on the mountain, God gave them the Ten Commandments, and that became the law. A nation is a group of people that come about a constitution. That's laws. They had laws, and they became a people, and then God gave them priests, priests. That's when they began to have priests, okay? Although they were Aaron before that, but he was alone. But now the priesthood was established. So as they were going, going on, moving on, God was giving them laws. And all those were recorded in the Book of Leviticus. The Book of Leviticus has those laws that I'm talking about, okay? The Book of Leviticus has the six hundred and thirteen laws. So in the Bible. So you should know that that is in the Bible already. So how that relates with the Ten Commandment is the Ten Commandments are, "That shall not do this, that shall not do that, that shall..." That's like lines, okay? But the six hundred and thirteen laws explain these. It's a further explanation of, and it gives, it gives like, it gives a scenario of, "That shall not kill," for instance. A scenario where you would have violated that covenant. So honor your father and your mother, and it will give a scenario. It would give hypothetical situation and explaining how they are supposed to live that. So that's how it ended up being six hundred and thirteen laws. And you can find that too. You can find the same format, you can find the same format in the New Testament, in Matthew, chapter five, six, seven, what you call the Sermon on the Mount. The Sermon on the Mount is the upgraded, upgraded, the New Testament laws, okay? So in the Sermon on the Mount, the beginning is the Beatitudes, which we read last Sunday, last Sunday at Mass. We read the Beatitudes, blessed are the poor in spirit, blessed are this, blessed are that. That is the beginning. It's like the Ten Commandments for the Old Testament. And then the explanation throughout the sermon, chapter six, seven, is the explanation. Okay? All right. Thank you all for coming in tonight and taking time away from your TV sets. And God bless us, and let us keep praying for our nation, for our electoral process, and for ourselves way beyond the elections. May Almighty God bless and keep you, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.